I know I shouldn't be so concerned about going in for that hard stuff. But then he's gonna...
I forgot to ask you.
Yeah, that's where they knock on the door.
Because you're injecting that stuff in your arm and...
I had it cut.
Fair enough.
Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 8th. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Here.
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 Commissioner, yes, that's it. With action?
Here.
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 Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item that's not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time that item comes up. So that all interested parties may have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the direction of the chair. Is there anyone who would like to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to item three. And that's the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, October 25th.
Take a motion when approved the minute of October 25th, 2017.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item four then. That's our parcel map hearing. And we generally take these together unless there's a question on the part of one of the commissioners and we need a presentation. Doesn't appear that we have that today. So the ones we're looking at are a tentative parcel map number PPM 17-012. And that's on Road 142 northeast of Rosy. And then also, we're looking at another parcel, a 348 acre parcel. And that's on the south side of Avenue 360, approximately one mile west of Road 100. And that's east of Traver. So this is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to speak on those. Seeing none, I guess we could go ahead and move on then to consider a motion on item A.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-012 and waiver of the final map.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, we'll look at item B then. And that's PPM 17-035. We need a motion on that one.
Make a motion we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structure and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-035 with a final map waiver.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item five, which is our special use permit PSP. This again is a public hearing. It's special use permit PSP 17-028 and PSP 17-030. And these are AT&amp;T facilities, streamlined engineering and design. And it looks like we have Dana today.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is for two AT&amp;T cell towers. They're 100-foot tall monopoles with support equipment. And they're both, there's two of them, on approximately 900 square foot leased portions on two different sites in the county. And this is the hearing notification map. And these projects were noticed according to the law. Staff did receive a phone call from a neighbor on 17028 right here, this gentleman that lived in the homesite parcel area. And he just wanted some clarification on where the exact location of the tower was. And once he was provided with that information, he was satisfied. These projects are both categorically exempt from SEQA. According to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small The entitlement is found in Section 162B, which allows radio, microwave, and television towers in all zones subject to the approval of a special use permit. Projects were found to be consistent with these general plan policies. These are the two vicinity maps. A PSP 17028 is located just north of Ivanhoe. The zone is AE 20. It's a 75-acre parcel. In the Rural Value Lands Plan, and the land use is Valley Agriculture, and the site contains an orchard. And the exact location would be in the upper northwest corner of the parcel. PSP 17030 is zoned RAM 12.5, which is a 12,500 square foot minimum. And the parcel is one acre in size. It's located inside the urban development boundary, or the, yeah, of Allensworth. And the land use is mixed use. And this site contains a church. And again, the exact location is in the upper northwest corner of the parcel. These are the aerial photographs of these two sites, the RVLP, and here's Allensworth. The zoning for these two locations. As mentioned, 028 is zoned AE 20, and 030 is RAM 12.5. This is the site plan for PSP 17-028. The location, again, up here, and site itself, and the elevation of the tower. And this is the same for 17030. Location on the parcel, the site itself, and the elevation. And staff is recommending, there's two different motions, one for each project, and approve a categorical exemption and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 17-028. And then the next screen would be 030. And that concludes staff's report.
Questions for staff?
On the one in Allensworth, how close is that to where all those historical buildings are at?
Just north of these.
North?
South, okay. South.
I don't think there's anything north.
Just south, they say.
But it's away from them?
By the historical buildings.
It doesn't look like it's by the park.
So the historical buildings are up...
Okay.
You know?
It's just that I thought I remembered a church being in those buildings, so I didn't...
You always ask questions that cannot be answered by me anyhow.
So how far are we from the State Historic Park?
That large area, the A1 right there, is generally that area. So we're pretty far from that. But just to reiterate, one of the biggest needs in all these disadvantaged communities, as I will get to in my presentation, is the lack of Wi-Fi, cell, and internet. So this would help out a lot. And we're glad that AT&amp;T could help us improve all these disadvantaged communities.
Is this one that's being considered under the grant they got to provide for rural areas?
Yeah. We have a few more left after this.
All right. All right, well, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone that's representing AT&amp;T that can give us a little background on this or have anything else to say about this particular Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Larry Hoppe, representing AT&amp;T. Address is 5220 Valverde Road, Loomis, California. Basically, I think we're about a half a mile from the State Historic Park. And like I said, these are part of that grant that we're providing wireless internet and cellphone coverage to the local area. I'd really like to answer any questions you guys have.
You know, the only thing that's come up on these in the past is, you know, some aesthetic enhancements either for at the ground level or on the tower itself. Is there anything like that we could consider for this project? Or have we considered?
Yeah, I mean, we consider typically when we look at providing some visual... I can't think of where I'm looking for. But for the visual appearance, it's in communities more in the foothills, stuff like that. I mean, and these are rural farmgrounds, so...
Well, I mean, is there any kind of landscape screening or anything like that in the...
No, not currently proposed.
Around the base. Anybody else have a question? I think it ought to be considered on all of these. Especially, you know, we're seeing that the ground screening's important too. And in this area, there's a lot of people that come to Allensworth, especially during their annual celebration, and, you know, will see this area. And I'm just thinking that we ought to consider some kind of ground screening at least in terms of the landscape.
The chair, just, this is located on a church facility, property, so whatever the lease was, whatever the church needed or asked for, I'm sure was given consideration when they obtained the right to be able to put the facility on there.
So it's on private property then?
We are in the far back corner of the parcel.
So it's screened.
If you look at the aerial on page 47, it would be screened, so to say, from the main thoroughfare there on Young Road. So, I mean, generally, it wouldn't require any aesthetic treatments, given that nobody would really, really see it.
Well, if no one in the Allensworth community is objecting, I guess it'll be a welcome addition to have the soul service.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak out, yea or nay, on this matter? Seeing none, I suppose we have the same questions on the Yedam area site. But in the past, we haven't, you know, unless someone's actually voiced some opposition, we haven't, you know, asked for any aesthetic screening. So if there's no further comments, then we'll close the public comment. And we are aware of the recommendation, so I guess we're looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 17028.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now, do we need a separate motion then for the other one? Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 17-030.
I second that.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, we'll move on to item B, and that's our vesting tentative tract map, TSM 17-003. And that's Self-Help Enterprises with Four Creeks. And this is a 37 single-family residential lot development. And this is in the Cutler-Rosy area, along Avenue 413 east of 124. And we have Aaron as our contact.
Chairperson Elliott, planning commissioners. I am Aaron Bach, chief planner with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And before you today is vesting tentative tract mapped, TSM 17-033. The property is located along Avenue 413, east of Road 124 in the Cutler-Rosy community. The subdivision itself is on 7.4 acres, and that's to be divided into 37 residential lots. These lots are to be sized between 5,000 to 11,360 square feet. And they already were provided a will serve letter by OPUD for sewer and water services. Here is the official vesting tentative tract map that Self-Help Enterprises is requesting this Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Supervisors for approval. As far as our analysis, the project itself is consistent with the general plan. It's within the Cutler-Rosy urban development boundary and designated residential. It fulfills all the requirements of the housing element. It complies with the zoning. It's zoned R1 and surrounded by C2SR. They would receive a density bonus, which I'll talk about in a second.
Can I interrupt you just for a second, Aaron?
Sure.
Let the record show that Commissioner Diaz is here.
Thank you for that.
My apologies for tardiness. I took a $6 million listing and I couldn't rush it.
Let that be stricken from the record. All right. So it complies with zoning, zoned R1, surrounded by C2SR, and a density bonus for smaller lots. It complies with SEQA infill exemption because it's surrounded by development on all four sides under Section 15183.1. And now, the density bonus itself for the small lots is a restriction for all single-family residential units. Lots 1 through 37 shall be for 30 years affordable housing in accordance with Government Code Section 65915 of the State Density Bonus Law and County Density Bonus Code. And so with that, that completes staff's report on this project. I believe one of the representatives is here for the project, the consultant. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Aaron, any questions for staff?
Straight forwards.
Yeah, we've seen a few of these, and they're generally done very well. Certainly fulfill a need. That's your territory, Mel. Does it work out there?
Yes, it'll work for me. But I'll let you know when we vote.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone who'd like to speak or provide some background information on this self-help project? Please state your name and address for the record.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Francisco Nunez. I'm a project manager with Self-Help Enterprises. Address is 8445 West Ellerwind Court. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring this project to your purview, and also thank Aaron and Mr. Washington for all the assistance they gave us to get it to this point. Like Aaron mentioned, it is a proposal of 37 single-family homes that will be built through the mutual self-help housing program, where approximately 10 families will fill their own homes in approximately 10 months. And once all the homes are completed, then the whole group moves into that, their new homes. The affordability of this project would be that limited to 80% of the area median income and can go as low as 60, but I'm not too sure on the lower end of that limit. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Say, 10 families?
It's 37 units, but we typically have groups of 10 at one point build their own homes. It can vary from eight to 11, but the magic number for us is 10 families at one time. And so we'll have groups of 10 until the entire subdivision is completed.
And what's the timetable on a project like this?
Timetable on a project, again, it depends on our recruitment process and how quickly we can recruit families from the, or participants from the committee to, that are eligible for the program. Typically, a group of 10 takes 10 months to construct. And we usually like to stagger them at least a couple of months from one group to the next, again, depending on our recruitment process. So it can take anywhere from a year and a half to possibly three years to complete the entire subdivision.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry. So you do have a waiting list?
We have a gateway program through Self-Help where we go out through these communities where we're doing these type of housing projects. And we start them in the process on what the requirements are and eligibility, so we can start developing a waiting list or a interest list for our projects. Typically, we won't start that until we start the subdivision improvement, construction of those improvements. So once we start the construction of the improvements, then we'll start developing that interest list. It usually takes us, it typically takes us about six months to complete those subdivision improvements once we start. So at that point, we'll have six months to develop an interest list and start gathering a specific interest list for that project. But you have members on our board from various different communities around there, and there is a need for housing in the Cutler-Rosy area.
Thank you.
Is there any consideration to the linkage of the community in terms of walking, transportation, that sort of thing?
In this specific project, we don't have any specific elements for that. We do, once we get into the design of the improvements, we'll make sure that we are able to construct sidewalks and make sure they link them to any existing improvements as far as that is concerned.
So you're going to start the infrastructure construction at what point?
Once we move through this tentative map approval, then we'll move through the final map and development of the improvement plans. So our tentative schedule right now would probably be to start construction of the improvement probably somewhere April to July of next year.
Bye, Nick.
All right, well, thanks for your comments. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this project? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I guess we're, their idea of the recommendations, do we want to entertain a motion? Are there any more questions?
I'll make that motion, I guess, to recommend that the Board of Supervisors certify and adopt a category infill exemption and approve the vesting tentative tract map number TSM 17-003.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
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 Although I missed most of Aaron's presentation, I did have the staff report, and I did go through it, and we've done others, so I think I have enough information here to say yes.
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 Okay. So I guess we'll move on to our hamlet plans, which is item C. And that again, I guess, is going to be Aaron. And again, I'll remind you that this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Chairperson Elliott and Commissioners. Again, it is Aaron Bach, chief planner with Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And before you today, it's going to be two different presentations, one for the hamlet plans and one for the updated community plan and other new community plans that we are doing. But they're all under the same general plan amendment 17-035. I am going to go through this presentation as quickly as I can to make sure we don't go too far past 10 o'clock today. But this is also included within the legacy plan presentation we had about a month back. So we did a lot of our heavy lifting at that meeting as far as going through the grant that helped fund this project. And I'll give you a little bit of the analysis and conclusions at the end of the second presentation today. But the hamlet plans have been a goal of the general plan to actually have hamlet plans since 2012, and this fulfills the general plan obligation to do so. As you can see, there are quite a few hamlets throughout the county, 11 of them, that include Delph Colony, Monson, Yedam, Seville, West Ocean, Len Cove, Tonyville, East Tulare Villa, Waukina, Teaviston, and Allensworth. So I will go through those, community by community, and hopefully we can wrap this up with as few motions as possible. The general plan itself, as far as implementation measures, when they were considering how to create hamlet plans, states that led by the Planning Commission, staff shall conduct a citizen outreach effort, as was explained at our last meeting for the legacy plans. Quite a few outreach meetings were held, 50 in total. And it considered such factors as mixed-use designation, sources of funding for hamlet plans, which is described in our conclusions report, and criteria for preparing and implementation schedule. Well, in this case, we did it all at one time, so that's not necessary. So the preparation of the hamlet plans and associated environmental documents should be programmed during the budget process. Again, we were able to achieve this with the grant funding we received. The county shall explore all available options to fund improvements. Again, that's provided in the grant summary conclusions report. The county shall amend its zoning ordinance to add mixed-use zones. We have done that to quite a large extent. It's the mixed-use overlay has been explained... It's the mixed-use overlay has been explained to this Planning Commission. The mixed-use overlay itself allows residential, commercial, and industrial uses on the same site with the restrictions that are allowed or required under that mixed-use zoning code. And that's the mixed-use overlay. The county shall minimize potential land use conflicts at the interface between urban development as well as upgrades that should be planned for in the hamlets. Again, this was a great opportunity to take a real hard look at our hamlets and what infrastructure is out there. As you may remember, Action Program Nine, under our Housing Element, looked at all the hamlets and as well as our SB two forty-four report. So we had quite a bit of infrastructure information going into this, but we were able to qualify that information by doing outreach and speaking to the citizens of Tulare County. So we have a very good understanding of where each one of these hamlets sits today as far as infrastructure. And of course, the county shall continue to support community and hamlet efforts to secure state and federal funding and pursue community development block grants. I'll talk a little bit about some of the funding that's already gone into improvements within some of these hamlets. Those were the implementation measures under the general plan. So I'll start off with Allensworth. It's our largest hamlet. It's about, it's bigger than early March. It's three point three one square miles. What we're proposing to do is actually increase it by about four hundred acres. There's quite a bit of citizen interest and concern that we have addressed with this community plan. And it does help us square off the community along with the railroad tracks and Road Eighty. Right now, it's not a very dense community. It's five hundred and sixty-five persons. It is severely disadvantaged with an income of twenty, median household income of twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. They do have water system, but no sewer or gas lines, which is what they're looking into now as far as energy and gas hookups to individual homes. They have received funding for ATP, the transportation program from Caltrans for bike paths, safe routes to school around the school in Alpa. And there has been quite a bit of high-speed rail-type interests around the community that we're also trying to address with this plan.
What is ATP?
It's the Active Transportation Program. What Caltrans did is it took all these individual types of funds for complete streets, safe routes to school, and to make it easy on themselves, they combined it into one grant source. We've gone after it every year for the last three cycles that they've put out there. We've been successful in, I think it's six projects now we've actually got funding for, but that's out of, you know, thirty-six projects. So it's quite an effort to even go after the funding. We actually even created an ATP plan to help us get the funding, and that was approved by the Board a couple of years back. But yes, it includes outreach, all the complete street stuff we've done goes into that ATP program for the county.
I'm sorry, I have to, did you say you were adding it by four hundred acres?
Roughly about four hundred. If you look at the plan there, you can see that these areas up through the rail and over on Road Eighty were not originally included in the one thousand acres.
So you said...
We're going to add roughly about four hundred.
And you said to square everything off.
We're going to square off Road Eighty here and we're going to square the community off on the railroad tracks right there.
And what's the advantage of adding those four hundred acres?
Well, the advantage is, you know, developers don't always develop where they own land or where interests necessarily lie. They do it where they have land. So there is some development interest on those lands. So again, if it's not within a UDB, HDB, or now a LDB, it will, all projects would have to go through the RVLP. And the advantage is with the linkages that already exist within the community and with the activity along, that's Road Twenty-four along the south. It just makes, it makes sense logically, but from a development perspective, those are areas where people have interest in developing. Delph Colony, point seven square miles, about half of it is agriculturally zoned. Population, one hundred and thirty-two persons. There has been interest up on the northwest corner by Self-Help and developing in Delph. So you could see we've done not that many changes to the community overall, but I think it would be a definite improvement to Delph Colony. East Tulare Villa, through this process, has become actually within the sphere of influence of the city of Tulare. It's a hundred and seventy acres. It's one of the better-designed communities from a zoning perspective, but there is still quite a bit of agricultural zoning that we are changing over to RA zoning. They have water and sewer lines run down Bardley Avenue, so they are available. Population about nine hundred and fifty-one persons, median household income is fifty thousand dollars a year. So disadvantaged, but not severely disadvantaged. There's one subdivision and that is waiting for us to go through this process right along the north side of the community. And they are, need to get rezoned so they can move forward with the subdivision. And the improved water system can also move forward. That's at the building permit stage, but they'll potentially need to make some accommodations for future development once this project is approved.
Yeah, through the chair, may I just make a comment? You stay on that, yeah. For East Tulare Villa as well, they are in the process of hooking up to the city of Tulare's water. We're, we've gone through the encroachment permits on that. But just as an overall point, that part of this zoning is to reflect what's actually on the ground, as in here, a lot of that's ag zoning, but there's rural residential type of facilities and houses in there. So part of it's trying to clean up to make the zoning consistent to what's actually on the ground. And then the second component is to be ready for development where people have proposals out and some other things that, so we're friendly, we're ready for future development. So it's kind of twofold. It's not just speculating, but it's actually what's on the ground as well as working with people that have come forward through this community outreach process to get land zoned properly for the types of things that they're looking to do.
Is the interest because of the COS out there or what?
Well, this developer's been looking at that property for a while. I think it was just time to move forward on the project. But as far as the water lines improvements that we're talking about, that's because of the COS interest. We, as the planning group here, just, if you look at the north and the south, the community rezoned a lot of that to commercial. And I think we're allowing ourselves to do that legislatively because of the water and sewer potential out there. We didn't always make such a bold move if there was an infrastructure available.
You said this was in the sphere of influence?
It is now. During this process, it's now within the sphere. Lynn Cove, again, like Mike was talking about, there is definitely development interests that have come forward through this process and some that have been lingering around for years, waiting for an opportunity like this. Population four hundred and ninety-four, median household income forty-three thousand. Like I was saying, the development interests have come forward and we're trying to get people zoned properly so to do subdivisions that they would like to do in Lynn Cove. Monson?
Question on Lynn Cove there. They got sewer and water out there or?
No, no. Monson, talking about grants, there was a grant the county received for water during the drought. And Monson was definitely in trouble in regards to water. So what we did was, through the state, we were able to put a well in the Sultana area and provide water through two Monsons through the Sultana CSD. And that was, that was quite a process. But again, talking about zoning, a lot of it was ag zoned, even though it's within the HDB. And besides the few houses that exist there, there wasn't a lot of potential for growth. So I think rezoning's going to allow a lot more potential for commercial opportunities in Monson where some already exist.
You have a population on that, Aaron?
Well, it's two hundred and thirty-seven persons. I grouped Yedam and Seville together since we talk about them in our public work circles quite a bit as Yedam and Seville. Overall, population between the two communities is roughly eight hundred persons, median household income averages out to about twenty-three thousand. Seville had severe water concerns, aged infrastructure and poor water quality. So it's anticipated they'll connect a water pipeline to Yedam. They have also looked at the storm drain, drainage issues in Seville through this process that we weren't fully aware of before going through this process. So it's definitely helped, improved our flood control planning for the area. And there is some rural residential development interest in Seville. I didn't hear so much in Yedam, even though Yedam has better infrastructure services or will have better infrastructure services. Tevison, another quite large hamlet, two point two square miles, but not very dense at all. Population is a hundred and thirty-two persons. You could see the zoning wasn't quite right as it was mostly zoned for agricultural purposes. So we did more rural residential zoning to at least be consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. And as, when I was sitting in my last meeting in Tevison, I understood from the Tevison CSD's director that they had received a grant in two thousand and sixteen. I knew they were, because of our projects that we do have there, we did understand that they were not issuing will serve letters. So we look forward to them being able to provide those in the not-too-distant future. But I did also understand that they were going to be able to double their water supply moving forward based on the grant they had received. Tonyville, just north of the city of Lindsay, population five hundred and seventy-two persons. They're connected to the Lindsay Strathmore Irrigation Districts. They have had water shortages and limitations as most of the water along the current canal there is not always provided during the drought times. So they also would be looking to have expanded well water service moving forward. And they also, Tulare County provides the sewer, so they're limited by what infrastructure is available to them based on the facilities we provide to them. Waukina, on the other side of the county, four miles northeast of Corcoran, so there's a lot of linkage to Waukina between that community and Corcoran. It's a hundred and nineteen acres total along SR one thirty-seven. So there is already commercial buildings out there as far as the market, but I think there is much more potential in the future for that location. They did receive a grant to do a school plan, but I understood that was held up due to the fact that there are quite a few drainage flooding issues in the community. They're not necessarily in flood zone X. So the, that process was held up while we were out there. So we did promise them, once they complete their school plan, if they complete their school plan, that would be incorporated more into this document. But also, the county has great interest in improving the circulation around one thirty-seven out there since the school is right, pretty much along one thirty-seven. I do understand they have traffic and circulation issues around that school. And the county throughout this, through this process, has provided the blinky lights and all the safety measures we could, but I think they need a more long-term plan to make that school as safe as possible. So we're also looking at helping them with their parking lot and how to redesign that. So the county's going quite a ways in trying to help that school provide as much safety as they can.
What's the population there?
Work with Kings County on that? I mean, they're so close to...
No, no.
Whatever.
We'd, you know, there is a limitation to our outreach efforts and at fifty meetings, you know, we've done about all we can do. But I believe we had three, three meetings in Waukina, including two at the school board. And...
But it almost seems like Corcoran would be involved in, but different county.
Different county.
May I, through the chair, just one, one bit more further clarification too. On these boundaries, these hamlet boundaries were adopted with the general plan back in two thousand and twelve. And the land use designation within all of these boundaries is already mixed use. So we're not, as we're doing this, we're not changing land use designations per se in here. We're doing zoning that's consistent with what's on the ground and that. So when you see areas that are green and you're thinking, well, this is ag, it's really not. It's already in an adopted boundary, hamlet boundary from the general plan, and it's already designated as mixed use. We're trying to create these bound, well, we're not creating the boundaries because they're already existing, but we're creating opportunities to really guide development into these existing boundaries as opposed to finding things out in the open ag areas. So this, this becomes an incentive to develop within the existing boundaries by providing the opportunity for development. And that, in a sense, it protects the valley floor, the RVLP area, because we're giving easy access and opportunities within these boundaries that are scattered throughout the valley. So I just wanted to put that point out there.
Right, and what, that, thanks, Mike. That reminded me, while I was at the last school board meeting, there was a developer who had began the process of Williamson Act now renewal and would have moved forward but for the fact that the county at the time did not want to make the zoning changes we're making now. You know, as far as the, it's all septic and water wells out there and the population's gonna creep up more regardless. So this is the best way to handle these infrastructure issues. As I've said before, you're either going to develop your way out of this or the state's going to help us fund our way out of the deficiencies we have in infrastructure. So where you have a population that's pretty consistent around a hundred before you end up with the Metheny tract issue where you have issues with your sewer or your water, get out ahead of it and provide the incentives for it to actually happen. Because if I go to the state right now, there's no incentive for them to do it because in the previous zoning, there's no way it's going to grow. This, this at least puts the onus on the state to say why they should fund or why they should not fund this. As far as environmental, same with the legacy plans. This is an addendum to the general plan. We did a finding of consistency as well as the addendum. We have a better jobs-to-housing balance, and I'll talk a little bit about later about the amount of commercial opportunities we're creating to balance off the fact that we probably had a less than one percent commercial zoning before we did this as far as total acreage zoned. So there's a much better jobs-to-housing balance. Water use reductions with the reduction in agricultural uses. And agriculture is still protected under RVLP outside of the hamlet boundaries. And as Mike discussed, the general plan had already designated all these lands mixed use. And so our studies from the general plan were anticipating mixed use in all these communities. Did I miss West Ocean? I think I missed West Ocean. I did miss West Ocean. Let me take a step back here. West Ocean, some of our commissioners had asked about West Ocean for the last few years. We are, we are finally there. It's four hundred and seventy-seven acres, ninety-two percent of it previously had agricultural-related zoning. Population six hundred and seventy-five, median household income is twenty thousand dollars a year. Uh, population six hundred and seventy-five, median household income is twenty thousand dollars a year. They had a water interconnection, uh, prior to the drought, uh, with Cal Water. It's still, still being utilized out there. These properties are still on septic and similar to Allensworth, they have a lot of properties that are, are using propane, even though the gas lines run, uh, pretty consistently down some of these streets. People choose to not hook up because of the cost of gas, so... That's West Goshen. So that, uh, completes staff's report. Um, we do recommend opening up the, the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any of these hamlets? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Uh, my name is, uh, Pedro Hernandez. I am a policy advocate with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. My address is, um, ten twenty North White Street in Hanford. Um, so again, I am not a resident, full disclosure, um, of Tulare County, but, um, we're part of a nonprofit that has, um, been one of the many parties, um, organize, uh, organizing the community outreach and just bringing folks to this very important, critical, like, um, planning update. You know, this is one of the biggest, um, elephants in the room that Tulare County has, um, shown leadership in and addressing this. And, um, I'm also a member of the, um, uh, twenty eighteen, um, Regional Transportation Plan Roundtable. And so from a planning perspective, at least as far as that's concerned, um, these updates will also help, um, Tulare County reach its, um, regional housing needs allocation, um, as well as meet its greenhouse gas reduction targets. So, I mean, we're not nearly out of the woods yet, um, since this is just, um, zoning updates. And, you know, that's different from investment in these communities and, um, having, um, private developers, um, commit as well. Um, but this is certainly a very important first step or one of the first, um, early steps into making sure that, um, the planning, um, agency as well as the county and all parties involved, um, try to get ahead of the game and not, um, as Aaron Buck said, um, re- have too many Metheny tract, um, communities, uh, situations. Because we're still organizing Metheny tract and we're still trying to dig our way out of, you know, many of the issues that, um, have resulted from lack of, of, of smart planning and, you know, lack of even, um, state assistance in this, in this process. So, um, this is a very important process and, you know, I am in support of this. And I hope, um, the planning commission also recognizes the, the long-term benefits for the rural, many rural communities that, um, you know, are within the jurisdiction of this, um, board.
Well, um, I wanted to ask you a question. You know, Aaron mentioned that we can develop our way out of this or we can get state funding to help us in some of these more dire situations. Does your organization then, um, work with the state to get some of that funding done? Because some of that stuff, when it's completed, it'll be even more attractive to private development, I would think.
Oh, yes. Um, so as far as our engagement in that process, um, we work with, uh, the local county governments to, um, make sure that they are applying for the available fund grants. Um, and also we're, we engage in the development of, um, funding guidelines for certain projects to ensure that, um, that we don't have a structural issue that's preventing development in rural communities. For example, if there's, um, um, certain definitions of what a community should be for investment or certain, um, categories that, um, do not prioritize disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged communities, we engage in that and those processes as well too. For example, we're engaged in, um, cycle four of the ATP plan. I know that was a question brought up, um, a couple minutes ago. We want to make sure that development is, uh, or those funds are, um, actually directed to communities that have, um, minimal transportation infrastructure. Because often, you know, state funding, uh, state grants are the only way that, you know, these really desperate invest, um, investments will be made. Um, we've also, um, worked with, um, as far as it just ATP is concerned, um, we've worked with Real Sutrels, who is currently offering free technical assistance for active, active transportation, um, projects to disadvantaged communities within Tulare County. Because Tulare County, as, uh, Aaron Buck said, um, has been applying for projects, but they have not been awarded in nearly as great a volume as, um, as that, as numbers of application, as the number of applications that have been submitted. And this is a trend generally throughout the San Wicke Valley as well too. Um, so we certainly do try to, uh, scramble every bit of, of funding that we can at least, um, influence in getting into these communities. And, and certainly this, this will help too because with updated land use planning, um, will help, you know, in an ideal world, more development. And one of the issues with even the active transportation plan is the issue of connectivity. Um, projects get funded if there is, um, a solid link between the connection from residencies and a, a key destination. So whether this is a school or, you know, a local market or what have you, a community park, um, this, um, those are factors that are considered. So, um, these plans as well as, you know, walking back to Tulare County, which is the county-wide plan, certainly do help leverage, um, applications as well too.
All right, thank you.
And just as a clarification, uh, Leadership Foundation did assist us in getting this grant as well.
Is there anyone else then? Would you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, my name is William Lee. The address is eighty-eight thirty Avenue twenty-four in Allensworth. I, uh, been working on developing Allensworth ever since two thousand and five. I, uh, trying to bring a college there. There's, uh, on one of these parcels there, there's, uh, sixty-nine acres that the Piero family is donating for the Allensworth Polytechnical Institute that was put into the footprint in nineteen fourteen, prior to the Colonel's death. Uh, and I'm just trying to fulfill his vision in making this, uh, college come into existence. And this is a big change and it helps with the zoning change. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds like a worthwhile project.
Sounds like a worthwhile project.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Samuel Piero. I live in Allensworth. I was born in Allensworth. And I desire greatly to see things improve and, and move forward. I think the zone change would really enhance the possibility of getting, uh, Allenworth moving and it'd provide jobs and a whole lot, a lot of things that's needed. So I'm definitely for it, for the zone change. And I, uh, hope that you all will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any of the hamlets? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing at this point. And maybe we should review the recommendations quickly.
Uh, so, uh, per the chair's recommendation, I will read the recommendations through the commission. Uh, for, uh, action A, uh, would be certification and adapt, adoption of the addendum to the two thousand and twelve Tulare County twenty thirty general plan final environmental impact report for the Hamlet Plans two thousand and seventeen update. This is a recommendation to the board.
Need a motion on that A?
Five, well, here, it's item A on the PowerPoint presentation.
So each, so there's a motion on each item?
There's a motion on each item.
There's going to be five motions, right?
Okay.
I will make that motion.
To what?
To it.
At, at...
Certification, the motion to approve the cert, no, certification and adoption of the addendum two thousand and twelve Tulare County twenty thirty general plan final environmental impact report for the Hamlet Plans two thousand and seventeen update.
Okay, second please.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, and then the second one, looks like it would be B, that adoption of the general plan amendment for hamlet plans, update inclusive Allensworth, Deaf Colony, Delft Colony, East Tulare, Lynn Cove, Monson, Seville, Tevison, Tonyville, Wakina, West Goshen, Yedem.
We didn't have a first yet.
I thought he was making a motion.
No, he was just clarifying what B was. Make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Then we adopt, um, adoption of the general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero three five for the Hamlet Plans two thousand and seventeen update inclusive of Allensworth, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one four, Delft Colony, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one five, East Tulare Villa, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one six, Lynn Cove, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one seven, Monson, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one eight, Seville, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero one nine, Tevison, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero twenty, Tonyville, uh, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero two one, Wakina, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero two two, West Goshen, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero two three, Yedem, general plan amendment number GPA seventeen dash zero two four, and amendments to part three of the Tulare County general plan to establish hamlet plans and to part one general plan amendment to the planning framework, land use, environment, environmental resources management, open space, uh, transport, transportation and circulation elements consistent with Hamlet Plans two thousand and seventeen update.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, the third one would be the amend that section eighteen point nine of ordinance three fifty-two. And that's the zoning ordinance and establishing the mixed use for Allensworth, Delft Colony, East Tulare Villa. I'll let anyone who wants to make the motion go through the rest of it.
I make a motion that we amend section eighteen point nine of ordinance number three five two, the zoning ordinance and establish the mixed use combining zone within the Allensworth, Delft Colony, East Tulare Villa, Monson, Seville, Tevison, Tonyville, Wakina, West Goshen and Yedem hamlet development boundaries.
That through the chair, I didn't hear Lynn Cove.
Oh, yeah. You want to add Lynn Cove to that motion?
Yes, I add Lynn Cove, which isn't written here. Should it be?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, the fourth one would be the, to amend the section to allow additional byright uses. It's within the same group, so can we have a motion on that one, please?
I'll make that recommendation. We amend section sixteen of ordinance number three five two to zoning ordinance to allow additional byright uses within the Allensworth, Delft Colony, East Tulare Villa, uh, Monson, Seville, Tevison, Tonyville, uh, Wakina, West Goshen and Yedem hamlet development. Is that, and should I include Lynn Cove on that?
Yes.
Uh, and include Lynn Cove hamlet.
That's funny, it's on mine.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, and our fifth one then is to amend the ordinance number three five two, the zoning ordinance. And this would, uh, set forth the zoning district maps for these, this group of hamlets. Do I have a motion?
So I recommend we amend ordinance, uh, number three five two, the zoning ordinances as set forth in the zoning district ordinance maps for Allensworth, Delft Colony, East Tulare Villa, Monson, Seville, Tevison, Tonyville, Wakina, West Goshen, Yedem and Lynn Cove, consistent with the Hamlet pa- plans of two thousand and seventeen update to rezone certain properties within Allensworth, Allensworth, Delft Cap Colony, East Tulare Villa, hamlet plans, Monson, Seville, Tevison, Tonyville, Wakina, West Goshen, Yedem and Lynn Cove.
I second that.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Um, I really want to commend staff. I think that this is the only way we can really move forward on improving these communities. And it looks like, um, somehow we're going to attract development or funding, and that's exactly what's needed.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Elliot. As you know, for years I've been harping on these little mobile home parks going out in forty-acre parcels and, uh, I mean, forty-acre zoning. And I've always said, just rezone it and do it right, give these people the infrastructure they need. This is exactly what you've done, so I'm very pleased to see it.
Okay, good job.
We're not done yet. We're not done yet.
We're just getting going. Okay, I think we can go straight into this next item.
Yes, this is a, also continued GPA seventeen dash zero three five, uh, for the community plans this time. Uh, there are, uh, a handful of community plans that were ever, uh, made into actual community plans. Um, and some of them just never, never had a community plan. So, uh, through the two thousand and twelve general plan, uh, as Mike stated, they were all the ones that did not have community plans, so to say. As far as land use designations, we're given the mixed use land use designation. So these, uh, projects, these, uh, general plan amendments include, uh, the communities that did not have that, those, uh, did not have official community plans before, except in this case, we did include Rich Grove. So this is an update to Rich Grove itself. So, uh, just really quickly, the communities we're talking about are London, Sultana, East Rosy, Rich Grove and Alpa. And those are, uh, spread throughout, throughout the county. Um, and, uh, what I'll do very quickly is just go through what we are attempting to do with the rezones for these communities. Uh, Alpa itself, uh, does have all the services. Um, zoning, uh, is somewhat consistent with what you'd want to see for a community as far as having commercial on its major thoroughfare. It does have a large school, um, but as you can see, even the school was not properly zoned. Um, so what we've done is, uh, give it the, the proper zonings, uh, expanded the commercial areas along the major thoroughfare there. And, um, where there is a CSD yard and an existing county park, we, we zoned those right. Um, so again, uh, I think similar to Wakina where there is some interact, interaction with Kings County, I think this area, uh, could develop, uh, more strongly than what it could have been if we did not rezone it. Uh, interestingly enough, as we're going through this process, Alpa did, uh, go out to the Prop two seventeen vote and they did, uh, get enough people to vote for increasing, uh, rates out there. So that was a, a huge, uh, step forward, uh, for the CSD because that's one of the complaints from a lot of the, uh, PUDs or CSD engineers is that the rate payers won't pay, pay more. And here's an example of where they will. So that, that's a great, and that's all in the, uh, community plan update we did. Uh, also interesting...
Oh, I was just going to, maybe you were going to point out, if, go back to Alpa, if you would. Down at the, uh, over a little bit to the, uh... Down at the, uh, over a little bit to the uh, west. And down, down low, that little spot right there. Right. That, that there is again where a developer wanted to build some triplexes, wasn't proper zoning. It was cost prohibitive for him to come through the process and it would have cost him twelve, thirteen thousand dollars to do this. Where he, he, he expressed his desire to build these and we incorporated in the plan. So now that's, that's been able to benefit his development and now after this has gone through the process to the board. They'll be able to build those uh, triplexes without having to go through all those hurdles.
And does Alpa have sewer and water then?
Yes. Okay. It's just a matter of uh, increasing the rates. Uh, they, they do have uh, some issues with the water and sewer as far as capacity, so they, they need. Well, the other problem is when you do go out for grant funding, uh, they want, the state wants to see that you can. Provide the uh, increase in your rate structure to help pay for the, the funding that the state provides, at least. Attempt to match. And uh, without that, it's, it's much more difficult to get funding, so this is a great, great example.
Aren't they in a, in line for a grant for a water system out there? Uh, they have a water system and improved.
Improved water system and interestingly enough, they also uh, want to improve. I don't have a map, the map's in the community plan of the large sphere of influence Alpa is having, so they're reaching out to even further rural residences. So when they have uh, issues as far as water. Quality, this, this will assist in allowing them to. Meet the capacity by expanding the sphere of influence.
All the way to Allensworth? Hadn't there been talks of somehow, yeah.
Alpa. Um, there, another item is there is uh, there is discussions about a bike path between Allensworth and uh, Alpa. That's a fairly long, fairly far along in the planning process, so there's definitely connectivity between those two communities.
What's the distance that would be? Approximately?
Four miles.
Five, five miles, I think, I think the path's five, five miles total.
I was gonna say it's not five miles, I don't think.
Four miles, I would guess, yeah.
That's a nice area, certain times of year for sure to ride a bike.
Uh, East Arosi uh, is on our list of communities to have a plan for, um, so it was made easy by this. Planning process. Um. Not much to East Arosi as far as the size of the community, but we again wanted to take advantage of the. Major uh, thoroughfare and uh, try to create as much economic development potential as far as rezoning the properties to commercial. Um, as far as the outreach, uh, there is obvious water quality issues in that area. So um, those are all documented in the, the report itself. And uh, moving forward, I think. Opportunity here is for the larger agricultural acreage to be, to be developed. While still having a, a buffer through the two communities, but eventually you would think East Arosi would grow to expand and capture. This area as well. Uh, London, um. We, through our research, found quite a few inconsistent land uses out there. Uh, where we did rezone a lot of the properties to commercial, there are existing commercial ventures. So it brought them into compliance. Um, and uh, as far as the previous zoning. Uh, did not even incorporate the wastewater treatment facilities out there, so we, we zoned it right. Uh, there is obvious potential for London, um. Given the existing commercial uses out there, but again, nobody comes in for building permits when they're. Know they're gonna get denied or not even get to the table to get those because they had to have to go through another rezoning or use permit process, so this will. Help get more uh, businesses into compliance.
Excuse me, when you're doing these plans, um. Just skipped and jumped in my mind. Does this help the lack of services? That are at some of these communities, uh, county services like?
Well, honestly, uh, going out to the communities that do have county services, um. They are a little bit better off than some of the CSDs, uh, from, from what we experienced London, uh, being an example. Um, so. Uh. We were able to document some of, through the workshops, some of the critiques or complaints, but for the most part, what I heard was. People don't want to pay full amounts of money for services they're being constricted on because of the water conservation requirements. So yes, you can't wash your car every day, you know, but, so that's, that's mainly what I was, I was hearing going out to these. So, but it does, every time we do a workshop, because the state grants are requiring more and more. Workshops and it's getting tougher to document workshops in the application process if you haven't had them. But now we've had them and we have the concerns, they're not just ours, you know, we're not forty thousand feet in the air. As the engineers and planners for the county saying, we need to do this, these are the citizens saying they're having these issues, so. To answer your question, yes, it helps, but did I see uh. Deficiencies as much from the county services compared to the CSD services? Not, I did not see so much on the deficiency side. And those that were deficient, I think have already been handled over the past couple of decades.
Thank you.
And Rich Grove, uh, Rich Grove has uh, received a lot of love over the years, it's probably one of the better planned. Uh, communities in the county, um, so what we did was basically touched up what was already there. And I think Dave did a great job in, Dave Bryant, in re, rezoning this community, the, bringing the, the park. The larger park, future park area on the southeast corner. Uh, it's already part of the CSD, uh, bringing that into the urban development boundary. Um, the other portions of the, the school was uh, zoned residential, you know, so we, we rezoned that. So I, I, I think we did a great, great job. We did ask some of the other larger farming facilities that have use permits if they'd want to be. Included, they, they chose not to be included in the urban development boundary, but uh, and Mike could talk to this a little bit more, just last week. We had uh, somebody come in, uh, requesting a transfer station, um, a transfer, a solid waste station on the south. Edge where it's now uh, zoned commercial, um, mixed use, so they, they. Still need the use permit, but as far as the sequoia process and everything else, it's made, made much easier.
The railroad's still, still active through there?
No.
Oh. Those tracks have been abandoned?
Correct.
Those are trails.
And that goes starting south of Strath, Terabella, Strathmore.
It doesn't go to Strathmore even.
Doesn't go.
It's Lindsey, I think it's about.
Lindsey, Lindsey.
That's supposed to be on the uh. Someone's uh, uh, drawing board to reactivate this rail line, is it?
It's supposed to be on somebody's drawing board?
I, I serve on. Cross county uh, to, to high speed rail.
TCAG has, there, there's discussions with TCAG. The, the longer it goes, uh, and this is getting aside from what we're here, but the, as, as the rail was abandoned. Certain parcels were sold off and then it becomes, once, once the right of way is gone, it's, it's much more challenging to, to get it back. City of Porterville working through TCAG. I believe they were successful, don't, I, I'm not certain, but I think they were successful on obtaining um. The right of way and maintaining it from Porterville up through Strathmore. And they're looking at alternative, like a bike path currently until some future time when rail might be able to come back in. But yes, they're looking at a cross valley, interconnect to the ultimate, to the high speed rail at some point in time. So they would obviously be trying to use the same right of way for, that was existing in the.
But that's gone from Porterville south to Rich Grove essentially?
Yeah, there's, yeah, through, through Terabella, uh, Seton Pistachios and Port, uh, uh. Cit, uh, Porterville Citrus and others have acquired some of that land and it's gonna be a challenge, uh. You know, there's lots of private landowners that have purchased the right of way, so south, south of Porterville. Down to say Rich Grove will be, would be a challenge. From Porterville north, that's where the, really the emphasis is on trying to maintain the right of way.
Serve on that committee on the cross valley rail. And we meet uh, several times a year to talk about that. I'm glad to hear it goes to Porterville because originally it stopped at Lindsey.
Well, it does stop in Lindsey, but the, Porterville and TCAG were trying to acquire, reacquire that right of way. And maintain it as a bike path or some alternative ra, uh, path. Until such time that we can maybe develop a cross, cross.
It really connect Kings and Tillery County if you want to work in. As far as you can go west and say with, from Porterville. It connects the community for a workforce.
Used to needle Alan Ashida about why we gave up on that. Uh, because I thought it was a good people mover. Bring people that didn't have vehicles, you know, from the southern part of the county all the way up to Visalia, which was a ma, major commercial hub. And uh, he said, well, it's too expensive, but you know, none of these, even up in the Bay Area or, or LA. None of these public transportation. Companies or, or, they, they never make money anyway. They're always subsidized by the government, but I thought it would be a good use of the right of way. So it sounds to me like there's a, some attempt. You know, with the cross county. To, to, to re, to re, reinvigorate that, so that's a good, that's good news. And I would hope that they could try to go all the way down to Rich Grove, then we'd have the whole county covered. In terms of moving people around.
It's a long project, it's not even projected in our lifetime, wait, so.
Well, we can start the process.
Yeah, I agree with you.
We've certainly seen other places where they regretted taking their railroads out. And put them back fifty to a hundred years later, so.
Anyway. Keep going.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Whit Latch, uh, what the, the draft summary and conclusions report is another motion we are. Approval we're going to need to make today to recommend approval of the final report that will go to the SGC. Um, and I just wanted to quickly go through this, I can pull it out of the agenda item, we go through it more in depth if you would like, but uh, for the most part, just. Top of the waves, uh, the report includes the introduction. Um, which states and shows how we complied with the requirements of the grant. Uh, how we complied with the goals of the grant and uh, how we increased the uh, potential for future grants and economic development in the county. Uh, it clearly delineates all the outreach we did, including an addendum that includes all the reports. From every one of those meetings that were held. Um, it includes all the infrastructure analysis from Action Program Nine and the SB two forty-four reports, including any updates that we included from our outreach. And it also uh, starts to uh. I want to say naturalize or, or uh. Qualify the, the quantitative data from what we heard from the citizens. Um, it also discusses how sigma is going to affect uh, the communities and how much more difficult it is. Going to be to get uh, more water rights for these communities. And it also discusses what we're going through now with the, the land process where the state. Wants us to go to a two point five minimum acres for, for a, a septic. Um, and then all the ex, exceptions that would have to go along with that, so. It's hard enough without these new regulations coming along and making it harder, but it, it discusses um. Potentially what the long-term outcome would be, uh, hopefully we would get all the exceptions and breaks for, for these communities that these two regulations would allow us to have. Uh, and ultimately that sets up the whole background and justifies why we need to do these general plan amendments and these zone changes. If you want to look at our uh, statistics, uh, we decreased agricultural acreage and that's hard agricultural acreage, AE twenty or AE forty zone lands. Um, and uh. I, I want to say we also had to define the difference between AE one zoning where there was residences versus A one zoning where there was not. So that decreases total of five hundred fifty-eight acres of agricultural land. We increased uh, commercial zoning sixty-five acres, I knew we threw a monster number out there, twelve million square feet. Uh, which is a little daunting, except I, we did show you all the maps where all of these communities exist throughout. Tillery County, I think a, a developer would get excited if they saw a twelve million square foot commercial project, but again, this is. Spread out throughout the county and as I said, this only represents sixty-five acres, only represents. Uh, less, less than a third of all the, the changes that we made to the zone, zones themselves. There was only seven hundred thousand square feet previously, less than a percent. Was commercial, so our jobs to housing balance has been way out of whack for, for many, many years. Um, and so this will hopefully ri, right the ship a little bit. Um, our. Environmental analysis showed that, and we even went through the full environmental analysis, updated. What's required by the Air District as far as running it through Calimod. Um, that shows that we are still under our cap if you just take net commercial growth. So we're still under our climate action plan, just taking net commercial growth, and it gets better as you can qualify that against the. Limited residential development with the uh. Absolute increase of up to, you know, twelve million square feet of uh, commercial acreage. Fifty-one acres of industrial and overall increased residential dwelling unit potential for, for a thousand, a thousand units. We were given the, the mandate from the board. Homes, people are not able to move back home to their communities because there is not enough residential development. Or uh, um. Uh, it's, if there is residential development, it's usually too, too expensive, so the idea is you expand the supply and hopefully the prices will come down. Um. And then finally, uh, we did, uh, as part of our application for this grant, say we would do a housing survey analysis, so we did. And if you look at the draft summary conclusions report, we did quite a bit of uh, analysis as far as seeing the correlations between previous housing studies and the one done in our most recent housing element. And when, when we did outreach with the community as part of the survey, if you look at the survey, it does state or ask. The uh, citizens to rate their own housing. So we're able to look at it objectively by what our consultants had said historically and what the citizens of the communities were saying about their own housing. And try to make that as apples to apples as possible. And you know, we did, we were able through the process to show the correlation between substandard housing and median income, although it's not a, a significant number. Um, but we did show a negative correlation between the housing survey and the outreach survey results. So they're not necessarily correlating together, they're correlating apart, meaning there is a, quite a difference in what an objective person sees as far as their. Standard of the housing and what a homeowner sees as far as the standard of their housing. So that's, that's all in the draft uh, summary and conclusions report. Uh, again, I'd like to, to thank quite a few people at this time, including Dave Bryant. Uh, well, first of all, for all his institutional knowledge, but uh, for taking every phone call and every letter and every email saying they wanted to rezone their property. Keeping it all together in one place. And then my emails and letters and keeping all that in one place, and then actually able to work with Johnson Bang to, to map. You know, thousands, thousands of acres, so it's a, quite, quite an accomplishment. Um, I'd also, also like to thank Susan Simon and Jessica Willis for their contribution. Uh, Jessica, even though she's in the environmental division and even though she was doing a lot of the air quality analysis, she pulled together. The statistics for what, what zone changes we have made. And of course, I'd like to thank Mike Washam and Hector for all their great ideas as we've, we've gone through this process and. Is there anybody I'm missing?
County Council.
County Council.
But that doesn't mean it's not good to go.
But uh, as, as far as the process, uh, we're going to recommend all this to go forward to the board, but even after that. Uh, once uh, SGC gets this, um, there'll be a exit interview and hopefully there'll be uh. Potential for, for the discussions uh, with SGC to expand, expand the research we've already done.
All right, thanks a lot, Aaron. All right. Thanks a lot, Aaron. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak on the community plans?
Public here.
Seeing now, oh, did you want to say something?
I'm in the computer.
Yeah, this is just to be on the record. Um, it's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay.
Pedro Hernandez, ten twenty North White Street, Hanford, California, nine three two three zero.
Okay, we appreciate your comment.
And that, I'd also like to thank Leadership Foundation and Self-Help Enterprises for, for going way beyond, you know, their efforts. Uh, with the limited funding we provided to them through this grant and then just for all the door-to-door outreach they did. Because originally, we had intended to do more technical, uh, internet interaction, uh, with the outreach to these communities, and that just was not going to work. So especially since Wi-Fi is one of the largest complaints in the community. So they actually had to go door-to-door. And when they couldn't get people together, they did door-to-door surveys and, and Leadership did quite a few door-to-door surveys. So we, we do appreciate their efforts.
It makes you wonder what we did before Wi-Fi.
Door-to-door.
Well, we did.
There, there were less doors, too. So, okay, thank you. And if there's no other comments, we'll close the public hearing. And we look here and we have six different items for motions.
I just have a quick question, please.
Sure.
As I read through some of these tables, uh, I was, uh, I was looking at London and the water. Um, there, there is no new water available for the residents there. So there, so we, if we, we add residential property, how do we, if there's not water available, how do you make those communities grow without those services? And do you feel very comfortable about those numbers, like water sewer service for the community?
Um, we, we, our consultant, VRPA Technologies, uh, did those studies during the housing element update. So starting back in two thousand and twelve, you look a lot of the citation for those studies that were based on, um, uh, municipal service reviews, and some of those were dating back, you know, two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine. So a- as far as what I did experience, um, i- it's always in dismay when someone, the cit- uh, somebody in the community says, "We don't have that many water connections." And then you got to go back and, and test it, you know? So then you look up the information from the municipal service review, and that's our last best information we have for a lot of these communities. So there is a big drive to get those MSRs updated. But they did truth test some of that with the engineers, either from the county or from the PUDs or CSDs. So as much information as we could get from those engineers, uh, we were able to provide the most up-to-date information. Uh, at the same time, I would like to qualify it as a, a planning exercise. It's not, nobody stamped any engineering documents, so it's close. Um, you know, during, especially during the outreach occurring during the drought, uh, they, they, take Early Mark, for example, you look at the report and it would say six hundred sewer connections, you know, during the drought and with the, the other issues. It, you're, you're, it's hard to get a will serve letter, uh, out of Early Mark right now. So things have changed dramatically since two thousand and ten, so it's, it's kind of like in a vacuum and the best information available, yes.
Just to further, uh, elaborate on that, is that, again, this is the land use aspect, the zoning, uh, development, when it comes through, the requirements are going to be there to make sure that they have the water before anything's approved and all of that. That, that's the key issue, kind of the, you know, the, the, the cart before the horse. This is really helping to go after the grants in the future. Because say, say some community was just zoned completely ag, and if we're trying to do an application for something and we say, "Oh, we'd like to, to, to get, boost the water system." Well, it's only zoned ag, there's no potential for growth, there's, you know, no existing of it. But now, when we do the same thing, uh, as, as Pedro would, would testify, that now we're saying, "We've had community outreach, we've got these communities, we've got the zoning in place that could, could potentially have growth, which is needed. You've got, uh, the, the communities giving their priorities of what's needed, and, and that community outreach piece is very vital to being competitive when going after grants to improve." So i- it's a first step. It's not just saying by zoning it, they're going to be able to just come in and everything's going to be wonderful. It's certainly not. We need to, to do that. But also developers that in the past may have to come in and invest a lot of money to do the zone change, now may be able to invest that money in the infrastructure improvements that will benefit the overall community. So, because they will have to make sure their water's good, their septic, whatever, however that is, uh, so, so the developer will, will maybe be able to participate in improving the overall area. Because for the, most of these communities, you need to have some growth, or you just, you stagnate and you don't grow and you, you fade. So that's why we want to have this opportunity. It's just the first step.
And that's been the successful formula elsewhere, of course, on a larger scale, but the developers have really come up with some creative ways to improve the communities. So with our recommendations before us, we're looking at six different items, so let's start with the first one, and that's that certification and adoption of the addendum. Do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, I'll make a rec- recommendation that we, uh, certification and adoption of the addendum to, uh, two thousand and twelve Tulare County, two thousand and thirty general plan, final environmental impact report for the community plans, two thousand and seventeen update.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, and then the second one is under that item B, and that's the adoption of general plan amendment.
I'll recommend, uh, the adoption of the general plan amendment, number G, general plan amendment seventeen dash zero thirty-five for the community plans, two thousand and seventeen update inclusive of Alpa general plan amendment, number GPA seventeen zero zero four, East Arosi general plan amendment, number GPA seventeen zero three four, London general plan amendment, number GPA seventeen dash zero zero eight, Rich Grove general plan amendment, uh, number GPA seventeen dash zero one one, Sultana general plan amendment, number GPA seventeen zero one two, and amendments to part three of the Tulare County general plan to establish community plans and to part one general plan amendment to the planning framework. Land use, environmental resources management, open space, transportation and circulation elements consistent with the community plans, two thousand and seventeen update.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, the third one would be another amend section.
I recommend that we amend the section eighteen dash nine, no, I'm sorry, eighteen point nine of ordinance number three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance, and establish the mixed use combining zone within the Alpa, East Arosi, London, Rich Grove, and Sultana urban development boundaries.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, and the next one would be another amend, and that's item D on here.
I recommend we amend section sixteen of ordinance three five two, the zoning ordinance to allow additional buyright uses within the Alpa, East Arosi, London, Rich Grove, and Sultana urban development boundaries.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, and then we move on to the second last one.
I'll make a recommendation. We amend ordinance number three five two, the zoning ordinance as set forth in the zoning district ordinance map for Alpa, East Arosi, London, Rich Grove, and Sultana, consistent with the community plan, two thousand and seventeen update to rezone certain property within Alpa, East Arosi, London, Rich Grove, and Sultana.
Hurry.
Goodness.
We should have had Mel read them all.
That motion.
At least the longest one. Uh, is there a second?
I did.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And our last one then is the approval of the strategic growth.
I recommend we approve the strategic growth council's final report.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Questions, Eric? What, where's Woodville? Wouldn't Woodville fit in some of these or?
Uh, we, uh, originally had anticipated doing Woodville. Uh, there's certain projects the CAO has committed himself to. Um, so, uh, that, that project was kind of in that, that process. So moving forward, we'll, we'll see exactly where that's at. But some of the groundwork's already been laid with Woodville as far as due diligence. If we go all the way back, we never intended to update all the community plans with this grant. It's not one of the goals. It's, we didn't even, uh, we didn't, couldn't even, uh, prophesize that we were going to do all this. But we did. Um, so, uh, we did twenty-one. Uh, there's twenty-five communities. We did outreach to, um, and at the end of the day, we intended to do kind of due diligence for the actual communities, the UDB updates. So a lot of them already, uh, Woodville included, Lemon Cove, have a lot of the ground, Plain View, have a lot of the groundwork laid out for them. But yeah, it's just too much to do.
And, and aren't they almost in another s- it seems like the communities left are almost in a section on their own? They're more developed?
Well, and Alpa's fairly well-developed. It's just that these were neatly within the, um, uh, EnviroScreen areas, and, and like I said, Woodville was one of those. But as far as the work that was necessary to get those completed and outreach and making sure we weren't going to have opposition to any of these projects, uh, the, those ones that were not here today represented at least one of those issues as far as moving it forward.
So we'll, we will see those coming.
You, you will see those.
Yeah, I, I'll talk a little bit about the upcoming community plans, uh, coming up next year in the director's report, so.
You know, the, I think the lack of o- opposition lends itself to the fact that it was very well-done and prepared, and, uh, it was something that the, the community felt they needed.
Don't you think those community meetings had a lot to do with that?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, also the fact that, uh, I remind everybody that the last zoning change updates were around the time I was born. And probably won't be until, uh, uh, I'm twice that age. So, yes, I think everybody got it. Especially when you look at, uh, Tevison, uh, it was amazing. Uh, some sophisticated people showed up to the Tevison meeting, uh, and they were wondering about alternatives and things like that. And I said, "Look at your AE twenty zoning, you know, and AE one zoning. And we need, most of you are way less than twenty acres. We need to rezone you, because otherwise, all these use permits and all these other requirements, when they, uh, when you try to go get them, you, you can't get them because we require that you comply with the minimum acreage. A five-acre lot does not comply with the minimum twenty acres. So a lot of people can't do anything on their properties." So that's okay for stuff in the RVLP. It's not okay when we try to force all this development into these HDBs and UDBs. So, yes, outreach helped out quite a bit.
That's one of the best things, is help people understand the zoning, and I think that's what this does. And it's important everywhere in the county. All right, thank you, Aaron. And, um, I guess we can move on to that director's report, item six.
I've got, um, let me pass these out. The, uh, Early Mark Park is finally coming to, uh, conclusion and where the grand, uh, grand opening is scheduled for Sunday, December, I think it's third, uh, at two in the afternoon. So, uh, what that is, is a flyer for that event, uh, coming up. So the park is, park is being, uh, completed. In the near term, um, as far as what we're looking at next week, we're looking at bringing the Culver Mine as well as, uh, an RV Park campground or the major pieces for. And I appreciate that the Planning Commission, uh, was willing to meet a second time, uh, to try to get some of this stuff out. So that's what we'll be looking at, is the major projects. There are probably some maps or something.
Some material.
Some maps on there as well. But, um, going forward, as far as community plans, now that we've, we've, we've completed the Early Mark Plan and this cluster of twenty-one plans, uh, Three Rivers will be one of the highest priorities. Three Rivers and Goshen will, are the two highest priorities for community plans, uh, going forward. The, uh, Three Rivers Plan, the draft environmental impact report should be released before the end of the year, and that will trigger a forty-five-day, uh, public review period, during which time we'll get back up into the community and, and hold at least one community meeting during the review period and, and maybe an additional one as needed, uh, before it comes to the Planning Commission. But that will be moving forward, uh, again, early spring, probably be, by the time it gets to you, you guys, but we're, we're moving that forward. The Goshen Community Plan, uh, we're working closely. We, we had to, uh, revise some technical studies on that because of some changes that were, uh, made in that plan. So once those things are done, which should be coming, those studies should be wrapped up probably near the end of the year as well. And then we'll get the draft environmental together on that and probably have that out early, um, still late January, maybe release for that and to get that going. So there, those two are, are our major focus. Then we also have, we'll be starting next year, probably in the springtime, we'll start community outreach, uh, with Cutler Arosi, which is another major, uh, community plan update. So that process will, will get started in earnest next year. And then we do have a couple other smaller communities. A couple that were on the list are, are for Ivanhoe, an update to the Ivanhoe Community Plan as far, as well as, um, Poplar Cotton Center. Uh, and then those others, as we talked about, will, will follow as well. But those are the focus right now on the community plans, uh, at this point. Uh, there's a few other things that'll be coming through. The, the, uh, Aaron mentioned it, the, the lamp, the, the onsite wastewater treatment, uh, plan that is, is going through the state has a mandate that, that they have, if you don't, if the county doesn't adopt their own, uh, and has to go through approval at the state level, uh, you default to, to the state's version. And the state's version has a minimum of two and a half acres to have, uh, to be able to put an onsite, uh, septic system on. So that, that creates a lot of havoc, especially in the, in the valley floor, for a lot of homesite parcels that your Planning Commission approves all the time on a routine basis, where you're just wanting to kick out one acre of land to develop a house. Now, under this requirement, it would be a minimum of two and a half acres. That's, there's an impact to ag production potentially there and, and other issues. So we're, we're trying to find exceptions and we're working with consultants to, to bring this forward. We'll have some community outreach meetings on that as well as, as it gets further forward, probably in early January, um, to look at those things. Uh, I think Fresno was successful on getting something on the valley floor that doesn't quite meet those things. So, so there, there can be some, uh, some exceptions written into the ordinance, uh, because it just doesn't quite make sense, uh, for, for many of the needs for, for our area. Um, also, what we'll probably be looking at next year, uh, will be, uh, potential, we're going to go to the board for direction. Obviously marijuana's a big issue as, as this goes out. We have a, we have a moratorium right now on it, but that's something that will have to be addressed in the future, near future, as well as there's, uh, uh, we're going to take a look and see from the board to see direction regarding short-term rental ordinances. And certain areas in, in the county are impacted, other areas are not. So we're going to take it to the board just to get direction on that and then move forward on, um, on their direction, on what they want to look at for that. Uh, so those are some of the things. And we have a pri- some private developments that will be coming forward, a couple subdivisions and, and some other things that, that are there. Oh, the Hash subdivision near Kingsburg, where this is a very unique project because it's really, we're looking at it as a Kingsburg development, but it's in Tulare County, but the streets continue right into Kingsburg. So it's really part of, uh, there. So we're working very closely with Kingsburg. Uh, it's complicated in a, in a way because their sewer systems, having to annex additional land in Tulare. It's complicated in a, in a way because their sewer system is having to annex additional land in Tulare County. And we've gone through that process, some preliminary processes, but there's still a number of pieces that need to go as far as who's paying for, for police and that. We've kind of got some preliminary agreement there, but that all has to be finalized as well as a number of annexations and, and that. So that's something that we might be looking at for the planning commission, potentially again, early next year as well. And that's 180 units, somewhere in that range, 165 houses, somewhere like that. So that's one that will be coming in the not-too-distant future.
Michael, tell me more about this two-and-a-half acre minimum for a septic system. When, when does that become law and so it'll affect any existing one-acre parcels?
It won't, it, it won't affect an existing, it will, what it does is create a, that you can't divide land and create additional acres that are, or parcels that are that small. If you already have a parcel and you're already, I, I, they can't, this is for, for subdivision of land. So if we were to bring a map in here and someone wants to divide off, they have 20 acres, they want to divide off a one-acre home site. And if, if this were to be the case that we have to default to their, their status of tier three level, it would require the, a minimum of two and a half acres, not one acre, to create that home site.
But isn't that if we don't?
If we don't.
Develop our own.
Which we're going through, however, that has to be, our own has to be approved by the state.
Right.
So we have to make our facts, our justification, our reasoning. And it makes sense on the valley floor, that's where we're going to focus because the mountains are one thing, the valley floor is certainly a different character. Because, you know, one-acre parcel, yeah, if you have one acre, one acre, one acre all combined, that's one thing. But if you have one acre in the middle of a 20-acre parcel and you go a quarter mile and now the next farmer has a one acre, that, that's not impacting whatsoever as far as the septic system. But the key is the state has to approve this plan. So we're looking at, and, and the deadline is coming up, and I believe it's May, that we have to have an adopted plan that's approved by the state. And the state takes quite a while to review it. So that's why I'm saying we're probably coming in January to the planning commission with, with it. And we're going to reach out to our, our civil engineers, the people that bring the maps all the time and discuss the process with that, with all the people that you're familiar with here, and go through that. But that's what we're looking at. We have to get it to the state pretty much by, we have to have it adopted by the board in February and we got to get to the state up there in time for them to get it on their agenda and for them to do their review.
When does the state moratorium happen? Is it now or?
Not a moratorium. It's, it's, it's by default, you go to that. If you don't have an adopted plan approved by that May date, it's a default that you have to comply with.
What about something comes up in November, December? We wouldn't consider that because it has to meet the two-and-a-half acre standard?
No, we're, we're going with our existing, our, up until the date of, of, of this, we would be going with our existing ordinance code.
Well, in some areas, it's going to encourage the movement, martyr the community water system. That's pretty obvious. I know in the foothills, that's the way it would work.
I know some of these, we did like some kind of a tertiary treatment in Springville. And so you'll take those kinds of things and, and they weren't, it wasn't terribly expensive. As a matter of fact, I thought it was better than a septic system. So, but, you know, the water is treated aerobically, or anyway, bacteria before and processed. So rather than the septic, we're just drains off into the ground, so.
Right, there'd be alternatives. There are, there's also more detail than just that. That's the basic thing that we're looking at. The other thing is every site has to be investigated onsite. They have to take some, some testing for absorption rates and, and all the, so there's a lot involved in doing this going forward, more than just that minimum. But the biggest, the biggest factor is that minimum parcel size.
There's not been a property that I've sold in the country, and I haven't sold that many, but that when we test the well water, there isn't bacteria in the well. And I always have to think, even though it's separated by, you know, whatever the rule is, it came from someplace, it probably came from the septic system, you know? So I think these are probably good things.
Are you finished?
I think, I think so.
Public apology time. What apologized to Wayne.
I didn't really mean to interrupt him, but because I fully agree with him on the Cross Valley rail and where it goes. But I serve on that committee.
You don't have to.
Oh, that's okay, but I just, I agree with you. But it's, I'm so irritated by the high-speed rail that goes nowhere. And what we could do is improve people's lives and jobs if we would connect this.
Well, ironically, the cross, the cross-rail probably will benefit from the high-speed rail because there might be some funding available for, for that interconnection potentially to the, to the Hanford Station.
Hard to see, but 30, 40 years down the road, that might be a high use.
I might agree with you, but I'd like to see it sooner rather than later.
I thought all the dairies are going to be gone though by that time, so there would be ghosting.
Well, there'll be other things there that'll, there'll be pot farms.
Something that'll still be there.
Chair, I've got a question for, for staff. I was writing my property tax checks this year and I didn't see Rita.
Rita, she retired.
Rita retired.
She retired. Oh, okay.
Why you didn't see her at a party?
That's too bad, boy, because she used to go after that money.
Is there anybody else over there that wants to chip in two cents? We've probably said a lot in terms of what the county's doing today, so.
Get a big vacation now?
Yeah, till next Wednesday.
I'll have them take a Friday afternoon off.
Okay, well, since we're coming back in one week, November 15th, 217, I'll adjourn November 8th.